Welcome, everybody. Select Board meeting. Join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and freedom of speech.
Any citizen's statements? David, could you flip that mic around so it's facing you guys?
It's a little bit better, right?
All right, so we have, we do have some correspondence. This is, this is dated a couple of days ago. It says, Dear Select Board, I'm asking Commission to place signs advertising St. Gabriel's Christmas Fair on the islands at the following locations, Millville Road and Route sixteen, Main Street and Route sixteen, and the third one at North Ave and Northridge Road. They will be held on Saturday, December second, 2023. The signs measure eighteen by eighteen by twenty-four inches. We placed three weeks prior to the event and removed on December third, 2023. Says, thank you for considering this request. And it's signed by, by Pat Gelli, who's the Chair of the St. Gabriel's Christmas Fair. So I guess I would just need a motion.
I move to approve the placement of signs advertising St. Gabriel's Christmas Fair on the islands at the Millville Road and Route sixteen, Main Street and Route sixteen, North Ave and Northridge Road. I probably didn't organize that right. The fair will be held on December second, 2023. The signs will be placed three weeks prior and removed on December third, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Look, we're gonna skip over number four for now. So I guess Chief Kersey, you wanna come on up? You have some appointments?
Evening.
Good evening.
Two appointments tonight. We're placing two positions. We had Officer, one Officer leave to go work for the Elevator Board, and then an Officer to go work for a solar startup company. So those two officers left. We had two open spots. So these are the two spots that are being filled. I asked you to appoint them in the order that we have here, because I did give conditional orders, offers in that order. So we have Timothy Hannan. He has a BA in Criminal Justice, originally raised in Douglas. So he's a local guy. Was in the Army, Army for a while. Recently graduated from the Academy. Attending that Academy is graduation on Friday, right? Sir, Friday night at Boylston. So he's fresh out, ready to go. He'll be on the FTO program for about sixteen weeks. And then we have Elijah Weiss here, also has a Bachelor's in Criminal Justice, originally from New York. I made sure before I hired him that he does not like the Yankees. So we know that. That's been confirmed.
All right, I'm from New York.
No, it would have been a deal breaker. I'm sorry.
That was the first question. You know, he made it through question one. He comes from us working at Fitchburg University. He's been there a little bit over a year in the college atmosphere, getting some experience. And now he's ready to come to a local community and serve the town. He originally went to Stonewall College.
Okay.
Berry College. And he liked it so much that he stayed in Massachusetts. So I don't think he's going back to New York. I think it's a little bit better working against him. So I asked you to appoint both of them, and they will, within the next two weeks, just see them on the road.
All right. We have a motion number six first.
I moved to appoint Timothy Hannan to the position of Police Officer for the Mendon Police Department, Step One, with a pay rate of $1,114.14 per week pending a successful completion of a physical and psychological exam.
Second.
All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
And then number seven? Elijah Weiss?
I moved.
No, you go ahead.
I waited. I moved to appoint Elijah Weiss to the position of Police Officer for the Mendon Police Department, Step One, with a pay rate of $1,114.14 per week pending a successful completion of a physical and psychological exam.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations, community guys. This is my favorite part.
Can we get a quick picture with you?
Absolutely.
Facebook picture.
Mendon's pictures?
Forever.
Yeah, forever.
It doesn't go away if it's on Wednesday. Do it on the corner. What do you want to do next? Do you want to give everybody?
Actually, you seem confused.
Nick, pick those.
Three, two, one. Very important.
Yeah. Then if you forget, you guys. Ask questions. Yes, yes, that's.
Alan lifts your neck a little bit, and you know, I can focus this. Basically. Thank you.
Great, brother guy. Appreciate it. Thank you. Basically, there's a lot of us. Congratulations. Yeah, yeah.
Well.
Let's, um. Let's, let's go to number eight. Just, just as kind of revisiting, Matthew Clark, you might remember, he was an alternate on the ZBA, and basically just had a hiccup with, um, with his ethics train. And it turns out there was just a, what's that? There is no, just, just so we're clear, there is no, um, but the issue, these, these were originally just so that everybody gets recorded so they can hear it on the remote, not, right? 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 So Matthew Clark was, was appointed to a term for the ZBA. And when it was reappointment time, he needed to do ethics training. And, you know, we take that seriously. It was, uh, it was a new ethics protocol, and he just didn't have it completed in time. So he didn't get appointed, he didn't get reappointed. But, but it's completed now, and the, the Town Clerk verified it. So at this point, I would just, I think it's appropriate to, to have him reappointed to the position he was already serving in.
Sure.
So with, you know, basically, he finished a previous term. So this would be until June of next year. So I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to appoint Matthew Clark as ZBA alternate. This term will expire on six thirty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great. Let's, number nine. Basically, this is, you know, under chapter, up to chapter sixty-one A, the, the property of thirty-one Washington Street, you know, is, is up for sale. And we have a right of first refusal. The land, the Land Use Committee met and is voted, you know, not, they suggest that we not pursue this. The homeowner is, is here and has asked us to make a decision so that she can move on and sell her property. So at this point, I would be looking for a motion. I recommend that we have a motion that we not exercise the right of purchase. So I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to not exercise the right to purchase the parcel of Chapter sixty-one A land located at thirty-one Washington Street, Mendon, Massachusetts.
Second.
All right. Any questions or discussion? Questions for the homeowner or the principal assessor that could answer any, if there were any? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, let's. Let's go back to number five, considering the appointment of Timmy, Timothy Rapharth, Heavy Equipment Operator for the Highway Department. Welcome.
Thank you. No, we're just here doing this. Our last employee decided to leave, go back to his old job. Tim was our second choice. Came, all three people on the interview committee were very happy with Tim. So I'd ask the Board to consider appointing him to a Heavy Equipment Operator. He does come to us with a lot of destruction experience as far as the landscaping. He has his hoisting licenses already, and some of the other required certifications that we asked them until he's pulled down. So like, like to appoint him to the position pending completion of his background check, because as of last night, he was not completely.
I'll be looking for a motion.
I move to appoint Timothy Rapharth as a full-time Heavy Equipment Operator for the Highway Department, Step One, with a rate of twenty-two forty per hour pending positive background check.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Yeah. Sometimes you're the first choice, because that's how it works out. And that probably hopefully works out better for us. I'm pretty sure.
All right. So we have somebody to talk us through number ten, the Council on Aging Expansion and the Architect Contract. Want to come on up?
Phil.
Sure.
Just the contract we asked the town to put together for Mike Petrovic. The Board approved the spending of the money, approved the selection of the contract. We just need to get the paperwork completed, I think. Things are working fine with them and moving forward. I just like to figure out how to get paperwork done.
It would just be a matter of Board signing the document to the architect having an account assignment, the specifications, what is required of that individual as well.
So we had an open question on what date?
I put in, I don't know if it ended up on that April thirtieth.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's the thirty days.
Prior to the annual town meeting, which I believe is.
I think it'll be more than ample. I'm expecting something by the end of the year. I think that date is more than reasonable.
I moved and turned to a contract, Michael Petrovic Architects for the Mendon Council on Aging Expansion feasibility project for the amount not to exceed $15,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
One question. That'll leave here and now and get forwarded to him. Be a regular man.
Actually, actually, all five of us, we have a signed copy here. It'll go to the, to our admin who's here remotely, and then she'll take care of handing it to him for his signature.
So next week.
Tomorrow. Will, yeah, tomorrow.
Just checking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Let me know.
All right. Number eleven, the Immissible Aggregation Agreement and Letters of Support. So I know Anne Mazir is here, and I think Carolyn Brathell as well, I saw was on there. So if you want to, just ladies want to, Anne, if you want to go first?
Yeah, I'll let Carolyn introduce it. I think she can do that. You could, you're on mute, Carolyn.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Municipal aggregation is something that Mendon has done before, and we have, and we paused it for a while several years ago. And then we decided to take it up again because our, it was a useful thing to do because we'd like to see if we can aggregate to people more than what is required by the utilities right now. And we have been waiting for four years from the, from the DPU to approve us and have been working closely with the, with the, our aggregation broker, Colonial Power. And, you know, we've been working to get the process completed so we could be approved. And in the meantime, we did tentatively get approved, kind of an interim basis earlier in the summer. And then the DPU decided that to do finally something that they wanted, had been wanting to do for about a year. And that was to revise or to make a proposal for, and consolidate new guidelines for approval for the program for municipal aggregation. Municipal aggregation, for those of, I should back up, is an opportunity for towns to buy as a town, electricity that would have theoretically, at least, but the point is for us to have higher green content or have greener sources of electricity than, than power plants. And, and so we've been, been working on this for four years. And the DPU now is, is putting out guidelines, they're looking for comments from towns. And we've been Colonial Power to get some feedback about how do they perceive what these potential guidelines are about. They are, they are concerned that, that since municipal aggregation became a program about fifteen years ago, I don't have the exact date. It is, the DPU has gotten more and more restrictive and asking for more and more details. And he's just getting really involved in what should really be a local decision, a town-wide, a town decision by the leadership of the town, and to do what is appropriate and for the citizens to be able to sign on to. The idea of aggregation is that it gives you higher green electricity. And sometimes it certainly can provide a really good opportunity for citizens to have a long-term contract rather than every six months having the utilities come up with new rates. And last winter, we saw that people were screaming bloody murder because the electricity rate was so high from National Grid. And usually contracts last two to three years. And so we've been working on this for four years. We've been, and we want, and in the meantime, the DPU is now saying they want to have a new proposal, new guidelines. And it seems as though they're basically wanting to codify already been doing for the last over four years, at least that, which doesn't really, it looks like a very long time for us to be able to offer something that the DP, if we, if the, if these comments, if they don't get enough feedback from towns that's saying, this is too restrictive, this is overreaching, we are perfectly capable of having town control and for a program like this, you need to trust us. They're, they're, imposing even more restrictions than in this proposal than what is currently available. So, you know, we, we would like to give feedback to the DPU, saying that we would like to have, the towns have, to be able to have their own control about what is best for their citizens and what is most attractive. And, you know, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, I don't know. So we, there are two things. We want to send in comments to the DPU, which Anne sent to you earlier. And the second is that there is a bill in the state legislature that is, would deal with municipal aggregation, which would help streamline and simplify the, the role of the DPU regarding their control over what towns can and cannot do. So I'm happy to answer more questions or give you more details. You just, you know, let me know.
I just wanted to add two things. That pricing is also an important factor, that it would give residents the opportunity to have better pricing on the electricity. And the other thing is, is this signing of the letters and making the comments does not commit Mendon to anything. It just allows us to get to the point where we could decide whether or not we want to do municipal aggregation. And then the Select Board is the group that decides that. So.
Okay, okay. So just a, a couple of clarifications. I just want to make sure I understand. You know, right now, any one of us looks at our, our, our utility bill for National Grid, there's two pieces to it, right? There is the transmission piece that pays for the, for the lines and, and, you know, all of the, the, the physical structures. And then there's the actual energy piece. And, you know, people have the option to choose some different energy providers. And also, if, if you decide to have solar and batteries installed, you know, that's another option you can do and actually pay back to the grid. If, my understanding is, this would be another option where the town would be able to come up with a, with a single price for everybody in town who wanted to opt into that, right? Everyone in town wouldn't be forced to do that. They could still do their solar, they could still stay with, with National Grid, or they could still go with Inspire or one of the other energy providers if they want. This is just to give people one more option that would mostly, that would save them some money over the most expensive option that National Grid provides, right?
Well, yes. Let me say this, that the usefulness of, of municipal aggregation is it gives us a stable price over a number of years rather than every six months. So that is a helpful thing for, for residents. That gives people some stability about what to expect about their bills. The, when Maura Healy was not our governor, or when she was, you know, when, when she was our Attorney General, she actually did a study and discovered that municipal aggregation was a much more secure, I guess that, that's the first adjective that comes to mind, way for people to know that they're really getting the bang, they're bang for their buck. That a lot of private entities go door to door and, and, you know, say, I'm gonna, I got a really good deal for you for electricity. And then they, the Maura Healy found that they actually, over most of the time, customers are paying more than they would be paying if they were going through, through their regular utility. It's actually a money, you know, it's, it's not advantageous for, for people to just, you know, get a kind of a fly-by-night arrangement. So.
So if, so what you're saying is that this is an opportunity for, for us as a town to provide a service to the residents that want it, where they'd have a, a more stable price over a number of years rather than a six-month window?
Yeah. Yes, there's that. And the other piece, thank you for reminding me. The other piece is that most, at this point, most municipal aggregation programs are having, are having opt-out. They make assumptions that this would, and people, if they want to, to change it, can opt-out and they can go with the regular utility or whatever.
And we did this, we, we did this several years ago, right? And then it came to the end and we were not able to re-up it because of, because of these issues, right?
I'm not sure exactly. I, I think years ago, it was actually a different kind of arrangement for different energy. It was brown aggregation, not green. And, and I think there was, there was some pricing concerns. So I, since then, the market has changed. The aggregation market has changed. We now have opt-out arrangements. And, and the electricity has, has just solar and especially in Massachusetts and where Vineyard Wind is getting, is getting built. So electricity is gonna, is getting greener all the time. And this is a way for us to have options for people who want to help have a green, you know, reduce their own personal carbon emissions.
I'd like to also clarify something. This only affects people that are getting the straight National Grid rate. Anyone who opted for another provider would stay with that. Nothing would change for them. So what we were hoping to, to do is to have a better rate. And then like Carolyn said, if they wanted to go back to the regular National Grid rate, they could always opt-out. But if you have solar panels or, you know, batteries or you, you know, chose another system, it wouldn't affect you.
Mike, you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. What we're talking about tonight, though, are comments regarding DPU's role in setting up aggregation. There'll be a separate discussion.
We'd have to vote it in.
Yeah. Want to.
Yes.
So then, and then last time we did this, we, it was, everybody was in, and so you had to opt-out. So that occurred when I served the first time. So it's the same idea. You could opt-out.
Okay.
But everybody started in. You had to actually.
Right.
Okay. The, the, one of the things that, that we are concerned about with the, the guidelines that they're proposing is that, say, for instance, the, the town decides, okay, we want to say in July of 2024, we want to, we want to launch the program then. And then it turns out that for some reason or other, it might be too high pricing. I'm not quite sure exactly what the, you know, we haven't gone down this route in a long time. So I don't know exactly how it'll play out. But in terms of why we might not want to go with it, but it certainly could be if the prices are too high, you know, as there's, we might not feel that this is a really good deal for the, for the town. So we might say, no, we were going to do this, but now we're going to back out of this. And the, the DPU would actually impose a six-month waiting period for us to be able to apply for a new launch time, launch date. And so that really limits our ability to be flexible and to use the, the, the rates that are available with the change, you know, in the summer and change in the winter. So it, it, it would give us, it would tie our hands a bit. So that's some of the, that's one of the details that we are making comments about, that we would really like to be able to have more flexibility as a town, to be able to find the right rate and the right arrangement for our citizens.
Hey, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the comments, if what we're doing here is driving more autonomy to the local municipality versus the DPU, personally, I'm all for it. I think there needs to be more of that flexibility. I heard Carolyn say that. I'm all for that. And being able to make decisions, turn on a dime, that makes sense to me. I'm not sure. I'm in support of the comments.
I mean, I will say this, this is only, this is a process. You know, these are proposals, and we'll see exactly what they do with the feedback that they get.
Yep. So no guarantees is what I'm hearing.
No, they're not. But, but there is, there is a fallback position. If the DPU is not interested in, in really making any changes from their restrictive guidelines that they're proposing, one option would be the, the state legislature, which is the second piece of what I'm asking you, while we're asking you to do, to be supportive of a particular bill that is in front of the telecommunications, utilities and energy committee, because it's a bill that would really support towns to have more.
Okay. Brendan, you had a?
Yeah, I just had, I wanted to make a comment and then follow it up with a question. So the first is a comment that when the energy prices were very high last, last winter, we were hearing from residents in town asking, hey, why, you know, why haven't we done this? And my friend has a, an aggregate program. And we were telling them, we have, except it's been basically in bureaucratic logjam for four years. So that was kind of a frustrating thing to have to tell them. And then the second thing is, when I went to the summary And then the second thing is when I went to the summary meeting with Colonial Power, nothing I saw in there, in this proposal was giving me any confidence that it was going to streamline that process, except make it worse, most likely. So, uh, yeah, I'm for this.
Yeah, yeah. My, my impression, it, it seems as though that all, all the regulations that they've have concocted over the years, they want to just codify it now and just have it all in one place so that, and yet they want to offer that they're, they're saying without any explanation how, that they want to streamline in the process between four to six months. But there, you know, there are already over 200 towns that are going to, you know, they're, they're, and they want to, they want just more to, they just want to be more, um, hands on. And I think we're quite capable of taking care of our own needs with our town.
Yeah, agree.
Okay. So I guess I would, there's a, there are a couple of documents here that look for.
Do you want me to pull those up and share them on the screen?
Um, if you want to, sure.
I can at least share this, this one that I have up.
I can. I mean, one of them is, is the letter that suggested that, that I, I sign as the chair to, to, uh, to Jeff Roy, who is, uh, you know, he's the, he's the chair of the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities and Energy at the State House.
Um, yeah.
And then the Senate chair is, uh, is Senator Michael Barrett. So it's a letter that was written to both of them in support of this proposal.
Yeah, that, so that all the, all that is required with this is for you to say, yes, we as a town support this. And our name would go on the list with all the other towns that are supporting this legislation. It's just a sign on letter. Um, and I, you know, if you all give your approval to that, then I will tell power, um, Colonial Power to just add the, the Mendon onto the list.
Well, the, the, the question I have for the second document, which is Commonwealth of Mass Department of Public Utilities is DPU 2023-67. It talks about initial comments of the town of Mendon. Um, and then it wants us to submit these comments. What's, what's the origin of these?
Most of the, most of these documents, the vast majority of this document came from, uh, Colonial Power. They know they're, you know, they've been working with the DPU for a long time, many, many years, over decades, I think. And they are, uh, they are, have been watching what has been happening to the DPU. So they have a lot of expertise that I am relying on. And, and I've, I've talked to other people in other towns and, um, I've talked, um, I know that, uh, other towns are not happy about the, um, what the DPU is proposing. And, and so I, I, you know, it isn't just Colonial Powers, um, say so that this is true. But the, the Colonial Power is also working, Colonial Power is one of three very large, um, uh, aggregation brokers. Peregrine is one and Good Energy is the other. Uh, so those three, and then there's the Cape Cod Compact. Um, and I'm not quite sure exactly.
So Colonial, so is, if I understand Colonial Power had, wants to get a group of towns together in the aggregate to hopefully band together and negotiate for a better price.
Well, these, these comments go to, apply to all 351 towns in the state, cities and towns in the state.
But Colonial Power that wrote this, that, that is, that is who they are, is they're a consortium, right? They're, they're trying to, uh, to get a group of, to, to basically aggregate together for a better price for all of the member towns, right?
It, 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 it's an, the, the town of Mendon itself is an aggregate.
Sure.
And so that is where, how we would be getting the discounted price. Hopefully it would be discounted. I mean, maybe it's going to be, we'll see what the pricing is. We haven't, we haven't gotten there yet.
Well, the final, you know, the, the request at the end of this, of these, uh, you know, of this second, second document of notes sent to the DPU committee says, as, as it is unclear how lengthy this guidelines proposal process will be before final approval, creating more delay. And as Mendon was given interim approval on June 29th, 2023, under, under the docket. And this was some back and forth that we had, we had begun this a long time ago. But we finally got interim approval on June 29th, 2023. Mendon is making a request to go forward with the current plan before the new guidelines are implemented.
Yep. Yep. I, I mean, we've already waited four years. I would really love to be able to, uh, you know, uh, we don't have no idea how long this process will be. But there, you know, their initial comments are due Friday, the October 6th. And then they have an opportunity for another month, in a month, another month, November 6th to, for people to have reply comments. And that is just, that's how the state works in terms of getting comments. And I'm not sure how long it will take for them to actually implement whatever it is they decide to go with.
Well, and again, what you're looking for is for us to file a motion and, and vote on sending these letters of support. So I guess, I mean, as number 11 is, is written there, I'd be looking for, for a motion if somebody would so, would like to do so.
I move to approve sending comments to the Department of Public Utilities, DPU, regarding the DPU municipal aggregation guidelines proposal, docket number 23-67, and supporting a municipal sign on letter to the Telecommunications, Utilities and Energy Joint Committee of the Massachusetts Legislature for Municipal Aggregation Bill H3852.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thank you for all the work you've done on this.
Thank you for your support.
We have the, the contract, did that make it all the way down or?
Yes, it's on the end here.
Okay. Just want to make sure it gets back in the folder. Or get in trouble. Okay. All right, let's, uh, talk about the Mendon Up the Regional School District Budget Subcommittee and the delegates. You know, David, this email was sent to you or maybe one of the, one of the members that went last night. Maybe we can talk about, uh, the process a little bit of what you, uh.
So I mean, there's three subcommittees, there are three roles that are opening up. One is to, um, participate in a budget, uh, subcommittee that kicks off next week, 11th. The other is capital planning subcommittee. That was last night. I actually attended that.
For the, for the Mendon Up the Region for the Schools.
The third item is collective bargaining, um, is for the s- school district is happening this year, just like on our side. And there's, uh, participation by the select board and/or FinCom members to be part of that process. So, um, given, I knew this was on the agenda. I knew there was a meeting last night. And since Elena, I cover the school and I'm looking at the capital planning side on the town side. I attended because I think they're going to be pretty much, uh, in concert or need to be in concert. So, I mean, I'd throw it out there. I'm happy to continue in that process.
So were they looking for, for delegates for both, um, the budget subcommittee and the capital planning, each of them?
Yep.
So, so you're volunteering for capital planning?
Yeah, I volunteer. I mean, I, last year, I think we tag teamed it.
Yep.
I thought it worked pretty well. Happy to do that again. Cause I think Elena was the only person that chose school for coverage. And that's a big job. So.
It is a big job.
So I'm happy to do it again as well.
I think I would appreciate it. Yes. Yeah. Especially since, uh, some of the meetings happen on the same nights as other meetings that I've already committed to.
You were at one last night. I was at the other.
Yeah.
So basically I would be looking for a motion to appoint, uh, Elena Brugos and Mike Goddard as our delegates to the Mendon Up the Regional School District Budget Subcommittee.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I suggest all subcommittees and we'll figure out who can cover what because they, they have separate subcommittees.
Besides those two?
Uh, well, then the negotiation will be a subcommittee as well. And I might also add that I know that, uh, our FinCom has expressed a more active role. I actually think we should engage FinCom.
I saw the, yeah.
Yeah.
To have them just pay as well.
Yeah.
Agree. Um, but we can follow up on that.
Yeah, so we can.
Yeah.
Let them do that.
Anyway, for them to get direct information.
Correct.
Telephone gaming.
And the, yeah, the, the school committee really appreciates it when there are finance committee members regularly attending, like anyone from the towns.
It was much, and it was much easier because, because I went to quite a few of those when I was on the FinCom. It's much easier to go there and hear it firsthand. Um, for anybody else who's interested about, uh, the schools and the budgets, we actually had somebody who was very involved in that, in, at the vocational school. Um, there's nothing like sitting there and hearing, hearing it firsthand from the people who actually run the school to explain what the financial situation is. So, so I guess the, the motion is to, uh, to appoint, um, Mike Goddard and Elena Brugos, um, as, uh, delegates to the, uh, ended up to regional school district, uh, financial subcommittees of bargaining, um, capital planning and, and the budget. Motion made. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right. Thank you very much. And, uh, is Charis on there yet? Not yet, huh? She's not up there yet. So. All right. And let's, um, let's go back to, to number four. So we can talk about the DPW organizational changes. Can you pull that up? I know that one I saw is kind of sideways. I don't know if you have a topic that.
I'm gonna, I was gonna share it if you.
All right, great. Yeah.
I'll let you go.
I already started, but I'll let you.
Let's figure out. I probably need to do this first.
So while you're doing that, what, what, what everybody should be aware of that's, that's attending the meeting in Washington, right? This, this board has a kind of an off schedule meeting. It's, as scheduled is what we would call a workshop that we're going to hold next week. And rather than having the traditional format of, you know, public comments and people question, questions and answers at the meetings. In a workshop, basically it's a public meeting, meaning that everybody can attend, attend and watch. But, um, it's, it's actually put in place for the five of us to, um, you know, to work on a subject and go back and forth. People can watch, but we're not looking for any outside comment, which is why we wanted this feedback now. Uh, because next week we're going to be looking at, um, actually, uh, three different things. We're going to be looking at, um, the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, um, presentation and their report that they filed with us several months ago, where they made several sweeping changes, um, on a, to the, to the way that the town runs its finances. Secondly, we have the Collins Center look at, um, all the subjects that we're going to talk about right now. DPW, and, and create a DPW in trash and parks. And, um, and then the third issue is everyone knows that there's a, a group of Mendon residents who are working very hard for the last few years on a, um, a master plan committee. So next week is not going to be the end of anything. It's going to be the beginning of a process. And what we're hoping to do next week is to figure out, you know, priorities of what do we need to look at now? Because some of it's going to need to be voted on by the voters at the annual town meeting in May. So, and some of it won't be done for a while. Uh, but we wanted to get, we really wanted to get some feedback from the people who are actually doing the jobs and, uh, and who are elected officials who volunteer and work, which is why we asked you all to come, um, to give us some feedback. So just, if you're ready to go, why don't we go through that?
Yes, one of the things I should say, just to preface it, it's that, uh, Dan and John and I, as well as Jody have met, and this is sort of the end product, uh, of the discussion, uh, that we had, probably three, two, three discussions, uh, in my office regarding, you know, the DS, DLF study and, uh, the impacts of what it is that we're trying to do in terms of not so much created Department of Public Works, but consolidate certain functions within the community, including the highway, parks, building maintenance, water, and sewer as well as trash. And we're looking at each of those components in terms of the function itself and how it fits into a potential organizational group that would be managed by one or two individuals, uh, principal superintendent, uh, a, uh, you know, a couple of foremen and then staff underneath them. Structurally, we went through and identified specifically what the issues were. We looked at the equipment in terms of what we have and what we're going to need. We looked at different staffing structures in terms of, you know, the kind of staff that we need. Is, is the potential that we could, uh, for example, parks, uh, move away from having individual employees versus putting the landscaping, mowing out to bid. So we've considered all of those factors and the end result of that is this presentation. And it's important to note that we're not looking at this as being the solution. Um, I think this is the first step in terms of identifying specifically what it is that we're trying to do and how we want to go about it. Uh, the person who takes my seat will take this further. The initial part of it, I think we're looking at it in terms of baby steps. And, uh, we have those outlined as part of the, of the final, uh, discussion about what we're going to do here tonight and what we're recommending that we do.
Does, if they're saying we're looking at first, you know, how things function.
Yes.
Right? And then we can talk about structure.
All right. I can't read that. So.
Yeah, I'm gonna, that's an eye test, man. Question, David, you, you indicated we're not creating a Department of Public. You, you.
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not calling it a Department of Public.
Help me understand the reason, like, it seems like this is not the first time I've heard that. So I'm wondering, is there something inherent about DPW that I need to understand as to why we wouldn't say we're creating a deep Department of Public Works?
A Department of Public Works generally involves a municipal water system that is controlled by a specific department, commonly owned by the town, not as a contractor to another community. And it has a full blown sewer department. And though, not only that, the highway, all of those departments can then use personnel.
Right.
And equipment and share that equipment and do the things they need to do. We talked today, for, for example, about the, uh, you know, cutting the grass and the benefit of that have for parks being that we could swap off personnel from highway and say, hey, today you're going over to help cut the grass and we could do that without any, without having to cross over some kind of a line departmentally.
Right. I, I would say that me, that's good. You, I, I want to share resources. I guess.
Answer your question.
You're looking, you're asking, why aren't we calling it a Department of Public?
Yeah, I just, I mean, it seemed to be a point made a couple of times. And I'm like, why? I figured there's something there I don't understand.
I think, wait a minute. The, the head position that we are talking about in this presentation would be a superintendent of public works. It's not a director. A director usually has those five core departments underneath them, which would be water, sewer, highway.
Put water and sewer aside.
Right, right. So that's why we're not calling it a director, but it is, it is still public works.
Would, would finding a qualified, excellent resource to be a superintendent be impacted by calling it a superintendent versus director? I'm just curious.
I, I think the approach here is, is really, and I think you kind of hit on this, this is step one and maybe, maybe we do want a DPW.
Yeah.
And this, that might be a step above this. This kind of sets, what we're proposing kind of sets in motion the barest minimum of a public works department that isn't a full blown Department of Public Works. But it starts to restructure those under a common.
I guess what I'm trying to say, before we start asking any questions, why don't we let them make their presentation? And then we can circle back with our questions.
That's fine. I prefer conversation, but that's cool. However, you guys want to do it. I. Whatever you want to do it, we can run through it.
Why don't you give it to us?
Yeah, now, we don't necessarily need to read it word for word. And I, I guess, let's see if it'll let me.
That's good. Cause you're gonna have to read it because I.
So the first, first thing we're, we're addressing here is our, the issues we're looking to address are, um, issues mostly that came from the, the Collins Center study. Uh, one, uh, was highway, and I let Dan speak on parks, but, uh, highway department right now, as it, having an interim surveyor position is left a vacancy on that department because they have the equipment operator position that is crucial come wintertime. So I think right off the bat, that's something that needs to be addressed. Um, we have a lack of a work order system and asset management systems down there and a lack of capital planning. I could tell you that work orders and fleet management systems down there would do wonders and, um, I'm spent. I'm spent on trying to get things accomplished.
And you and I have talked about that. You were already looking into into.
I do have software and Jason and I have looked into it too. And one of the other things that we're talking about in highway is I know right now the tree warden is an elected position. But one of the discussions from the Collins Center was having also the tree ward, or under the Department of Public Works, so. We put it in there as maybe we'll look to make that an appointed position and it falls to. Somebody that's already working for the highway department.
And then, so on the park side, you know, straight out of the Collins Center report. The grounds landscape maintenance is understaffed and under resourced. We've got a single thirty hour employee who does all the mowing and then we have a seasonal crew that comes in the summer. And and from parks perspective, we reached a point, it's just not sustainable. We keep adding new things, you know, we just renovated this campus. We're potentially looking at, you know, a future senior center. We're just adding more and more properties. You know, there's demand for more athletic fields and we can barely keep up with the ones we have. So I think from our side, we've reached a point that it's time to do something different. You know, I, through this proposal, we're suggesting it should be a dedicated role to oversee landscape maintenance. It would transfer that over to the DPW highway department, whatever you want to call it. It's again, to take advantage of shared resources. What we're proposing is this person would have the same qualifications as the highway crew. So they could backfill highway or vice versa. They can have access to that equipment, the loader, all the stuff that right now we'd have to contract out. Why did this just go away?
Also, that that position that we are talking about adding and we could look at that more would. Get, we would get rid of one contracted snowplow driver that we, every year, as a CDL driver, we bring this person in. Whoever it is, and they drive for us every time we solve and every time we plow. This new position would get rid of that.
And you're saying that that Dan would dedicate more time to like.
Right.
More time to programming for parks, water, IT, whatever is needed of Dan. Yeah, because the maintenance.
Brain instead of sitting on a.
With that, right, that's the argument is I'm spending half my time.
Yeah.
Sitting on a mower, you know, and there's a lot more parks could do, there's a lot of capital work, you know, a lot of more detailed projects. If we could get rid of some of those more busy work. And then separately, we talked about issues, you know, there's building maintenance. Nobody's coordinating building maintenance, especially in this building. So this new position would take.
Either fall to Dan or to myself right now.
It's a critical thing because most communities have some type of facilities manager. We experienced two events over the last three months relating to rainfall and. Water entered into the building and like, what do we call?
Yeah, and if you're always asking for help, that makes it harder for you to work with employees when you're demanding they come over and.
Yeah. You know, both Dean and John, John.
Well, they're awesome.
You know, trying bringing the fire department, bringing fans up to drive up the areas that were wet. It's, it became very obvious that that's a critical function in terms of the maintenance. And not only maintenance of the buildings in an emergency, maintenance of the buildings in terms of projects, when things start to go. Arrive or they start to get to their end of their useful life, it's important to have a point person who can. Capture that, commit it to the capital plan and then implement whatever, if we needed a heating system to take the role. Of procuring that heating system, making sure that it's performing to a certain standard and just, you know, maintenance issues, which.
So we always relied on the town administrator in the past to to take care of that, or it just happened when it happened?
Thank you.
So I mean, right, right, the second.
Okay.
Right now, our, like, just for instance, our boiler services are are through one particular person, but when it comes to the town hall. They deal with Dan. When it comes to the highway department, they deal with the highway surveyor. If you had one person could deal with them and make sure that everything's getting serviced.
Yeah, right.
And I'm in the process of trying to get the boil, to boil it out. And the air exchange working, which I would have never known about. Mike had told me that, you know. That we got only one boiler work in the air ski, uh, air exchange system is not working at all. So I've been working with the contractor in town. We've used it previously and he's gonna be coming in over the next couple of weeks to. Actually connect everything and get things working the way they should be.
Who takes care of the police station?
I'm glad he's here. I mean, we just ran into an issue with a septic issue that got dealt with his lap.
When we met with the Collins Center, I think we all agreed, facilities management need to be rolled into the recommendation for these reasons, right? This is not new. We understand it, right? What I, I guess. Ask a question?
Of course.
And I mean that nice, I mean, I keep hearing this position can do that and this, is there? Is there a summary at the end about FTE ads in this?
Yes, we will get to that.
This kind of set everything off, but we have it all laid out in here.
Great.
Yep. And then the last couple of things noted here, so water and sewer, you know, we don't have sewer, certainly in the future we might. You know, right now with water, everything's contracted out. You again, you have a five hour a week clerk. There's potential to in-house some things, save a ton of money. And utilize existing funds. With regards to trash, this proposal at least sets up a groundwork. If the future, we want to make changes to trash, we can do that. Our lives keeps changing. And then we also touch upon, there's infrastructure issues and facility issues which we brought up before. You know, you need a garage or park space. I know there's needs for highway in terms of office space. It, you know, it's just, and was brought up in the Collins Center. And then suggested.
Just kind of a brief rundown of the highway department. We have eleven trucks. Five of which require commercial drivers licenses, nine pieces of heavy equipments, just loaders, backhoes, sweepers. Multiple pieces of smaller equipment such as chainsaws, asphalt, saws, leaf blowers, chippers, etc.
It was just your staffing.
Yeah, our staffing, so there's one full time highway surveyor, one full time heavy equipment operator foreman. A full time heavy equipment operator mechanic, three full time heavy equipment operators and one thirty hour a week administrative assistant.
And then parks, you've got one thirty hour a week director of parks and rec. We bring on three to four seasonal employees in the summer. We've got approximately fifty employees, also seasonal for our summer programming, a single truck trailer, some miscellaneous stuff, the two primary mowers. The water department, you have a five hour a week clerk. Everything else is contracted out. The certified water operator, which is like a statutory thing, we have to have that is contracted out. We're spending. Twenty-five thousand dollars a year and it's just going up and up. And then a small inventory of equipment. And so then hopefully, I'm just expecting this in a little bit. This is kind of the the new proposed organizational chart. So. You have your select board, town administrator, your superintendent of public works, and then underneath that person. You have your future water trash sewer. The executive assistant. The highway foreman, tree warden, and then underneath that person is the highway crew. And then the new position we're proposing is a grounds and facilities maintenance foreman, who would then have seasonal staffing underneath them. And then separately, you've got your elected parks board, your elected water board, your director of parks and rec slash water superintendent, and then the seasonal staffing. So kind of. And we'll get into this, we're leaving, basically leaving water where it is now, but obviously, if this study came to fruition, you'd need a full water department, then that's a whole new discussion.
Well, the, well, quite honestly, the discussion is, the only reason we're doing the water piece is because the sewer piece would require that.
Right.
Right? So really, we're we're never gonna see, just so we're clear, the plan is we're never gonna see water by itself. Beyond what it is right now. So we wouldn't put water in in on the. Because water isn't the limiting.
Right now, it's tiny little thing.
Correct.
But it could be.
But but just so we're clear, rather than the the discussion, it would be water and sewer together if we were going.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever it ends up.
Right, right.
Hopefully, that study is progressing.
So the the next thing we're talking about is the job, the job requirements of a superintendent of public works, which would be highway. We're talking about taking the maintenance department and making it grounds and leaving parks separate from programming. So highway grounds and facilities, they would oversee the day to day operations of maintenance staff from the highway grounds. Facilities maintenance departments, including work assignments, trainings and schedules. We communicate with other departments, including the select board, board of health, police department, fire department. Handles requests and issues involving the residents of Bend in a timely, professional manner. Coordinate snow operations, including plow contractors, salt vendors and fuel vendors, address personnel issues and evaluate employee performance. On a biannual basis, would develop a capital plan for all maintenance departments or recommend replacement of equipment. Implement a road maintenance schedule based on data provided by Beta Corporation, payment preservation study. Maintain an updated and balanced budget for highway grounds, facilities, maintenance and tree warden and maintain a clean, safe. At fair work environment for employees. This would be the the highway foreman, which we've. We've put this tree warden for right now, doesn't have to go that way, we can do it however we want. Receives their work assignments from the superintendent, manages the highway department field work. They track progress on projects and report back to the superintendent. They monitor equipment and communication and communicates with the department mechanic about equipment conditions. Ensure the road crew is working in a safe and professional manner. Handle the duties of the tree warden and they are a member of the highway department union and we put a note in here that the tree warden is a three year elected position. With the current term to expire in May of twenty twenty-five, so there's not really anything we can do with that right now.
Well, unless, unless.
It's voted on.
Well, unless, unless the current. The the current elected official wanted to retire or resign, then we'd have to do, go to a town meeting to 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 change it. But that, and that's why I started out saying, right now, we're talking about functionality, not necessarily.
Right, and we under, we completely understand that this framework that we laid out is something that can, we could potentially take place over the next five years.
It's a suggestion.
It's a suggestion and we know that it's not all gonna happen now or. Going forward. The next position is the new position that we talked about, which would be a grounds and facilities maintenance foreman. They would again, receive their work assignments from the superintendent and manage grounds and facilities maintenance work. Work with the town administrator, the library director, council on aging, police chief if he wants to help, fire chief. Like coordinate maintenance on their respective buildings and is on call in emergency maintenance issues. They would track their progress on projects and report back to the superintendent. Coordinate with the superintendent and the parks director on parks capital project and maintenance as needed. Again, monitor equipment and communicate with the department mechanic as far as equipment conditions. Supervise the seasonal landscape maintenance crew and ensure they're working in a safe and professional manner. This, I already touched on this, but they would work with the highway department during the winter months for snow and ice removal, which would replace the CDL contractor at. Thirty-two dollars and fifty cents an hour is what we're paying that contractor. They would be required to hold the CDL and hoisting licenses. That way they would have access to. The backholds, loader, all the different equipment down there without having to pull somebody from highway. To operate that stuff for the crew and they would be a member of the highway department union.
And then, this next slide is kind of summarizes what, you know, what what you leave with the park side. So you'd have a director of parks and recreation at thirty-five hours a week. Reports to the parks commission, serves as the department head for the department, oversees the day to day operations, parks programming. All the stuff that happens now, hires supervises the seasonal park staff. Works with the commission to prioritize parks capital projects, coordinates with the superintendent on parks capital needs and facility maintenance. Coordinates with the superintendent and ground and building maintenance foreman on parks landscape maintenance of athletic fields and parks. And then water superintendent slash certified operator would be five hours, reports to the water commission, serves as department head for the water department. Performs maintenance and repairs and hydrants valves and water meters as needed, coordinates with the superintendent, town administrator, library director and COA director. On operation of the town owned public water supplies. A potential stipend to serve as the certified water operator pending future certification. And then just a footnote, we just touched on, you know, if the town were to develop a larger system, this position would likely need to become a full time position. You know, it would totally be a new discussion. And then finally, you know, green communities coordinator, viewpoint administration, website stuff, could be stipend roles. You know, that I I manage some of these weird kind of project tasks on a stipend basis versus hourly. You know, where they can be done in off hours and things like that, you know.
The viewpoint piece is software.
Yes, the viewpoint is the building permitting, and so really what I'm doing is doing the deposits every couple of weeks and helping people configure things.
I'm not sure why, and and why is it that we never used Worldband or our IT?
We did. We also worked with them to build out some stuff. They did some some legwork. This, so right now currently on thirty hours for parks, I'm five for water and I'm getting three hours a week that covers some of this esoteric tech maintenance things. And it really was never very clearly defined.
Right.
So that's.
Listen.
What's right, and that's some of what this would address is like define this, who's responsible for what? Because that's what happens. They call me, they call John.
Right.
They, you know, they, nobody knows who to call for things. And so then this, this is the total budget that we're proposing for all of this. And then later on, we identify the specific additions.
Oh, yeah, the superintendent of highway and grounds and facilities, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollar salary. There's a ninety thousand dollar. There's already ninety thousand dollars in the budget for the highway surveyor salary, so it'd be an increase of ten thousand dollars. I could tell you that I looked at a lot of surrounding towns around here and what their superintendents make. And this is a little more than what a superintendent would make. Say Upton will take, for example, their parks and. Highway superintendent makes roughly ninety thousand dollars a year. But he has a DPW director over him to handle all of the budget and the behind the scenes stuff, whereas this position would not. The grounds and facilities maintenance foreman was the new position that we talked about. It would start out at twenty-three forty an hour, as you heard. Tonight, our new employees committed twenty-two forty an hour, but the union contract states that if they are foreman, they receive an extra dollar an hour. And then benefits for them. Were, I think we were looking at roughly sixty-five thousand for this new position.
Yeah. Do you have potential? For any of these positions within your departments right now, or are these things that we would hire up? Well, specifically the format position.
I do.
Just, I'm wondering what the complexity of hiring for us is if we go forward with this.
But then you'd have to backfill that.
Yeah, then we'd have to backfill the position.
Yeah, but it's still easier to fill an operator position than a.
I mean, and over the years, I think we've all had contact with various people that, you know, gee, if only we had a full time role for you. So I think, I think if this position were created, I I think you'd have applicants. One external.
Somebody that works for highway and I also have somebody that used to work for highway and is doing building maintenance now for another town who. Could potentially be a good fit.
Okay. Just a question, interim highway surveyor, that is no longer part of this structure, correct?
That would turn into the superintendent of highway grounds and facilities.
The responsibilities of the highway surveyor would go.
Don't be really clear, because we have an interim highway surveyor.
Correct.
That person may be a leading candidate to step into a superintendent role.
Absolutely.
But if we start backfilling these positions because of the interim highway surveyor role. What happens to the individual that may or may not be the superintendent? Do they have a role to fall back into? Has that been discussed?
We actually. There currently is a vacancy.
Right, but but the presentation says we need to fill it before the winter. If we fill that. Are we gonna get jammed up? It's easier to do than undo.
Yes. There is a one year probationary period in the contract and while I would, you know, that's maybe not the greatest thing to do.
Against them, but.
You could hire somebody and then if something changes, they get bumped out.
And and you know, and and again, this is just a first pass, because anything we did would have to be, would have to be bargained because all of. So there's, I mean, this is just.
Overall, I think this is a great start.
That's all this is.
This is all this is.
Everybody's, everybody's on the same page. This is just.
One, one little related question. Didn't that Collins Center grant include doing some candidate search also? So that's still potentially on the table.
Yes. That's a resource we haven't tapped yet, that we do plan to. To use eventually when the, when the time comes.
Specified like which ca- like candidate, I guess that's.
I've been, I've been told there's a, there's a flexibility there sometimes, particularly where we've got them doing double duty now.
Right.
Town administrator.
Okay.
And they are, they're, they're a government agency, so. I find that they're very flexible and easy to work with.
I I think if you're talking about the the superintendent being. You know, somebody with a bachelor's or master's degree and, you know, PE. then you, you're not gonna get that person for a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah, I think the, it's totally unrealistic. That's probably a hundred fifty, hundred sixty.
Yeah, DPW director positions that I was looking at were anywhere from a hundred twenty-five and up.
Right. So, but one of the things we talked about when we made an appointed position was that the role of the highway survey has become technically far more advanced than it used to be. So we needed people, we're gonna, we said, to the town, we said, we need to find somebody who's technically an expert. For, in this, this beyond, this is a portion of what you guys played out here. So I would think we do need to. The hundred might be short. So my other question in general would be, from an HR perspective, was there any compensation analysis done for this, this, these dollars?
Not, yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's fair. Cause I think that's a, a next.
That's why it gets very clear that, again, we're, we're gonna have our own discussion about this next week, but I wanted to give them the opportunity.
Yeah, no, this is good stuff. I like the, um.
All right, you guys got three more.
Boring resources.
Yeah.
So executive. Executive assistant, um, if, if this was created as a highway grounds and facilities, she would be now handling more of a workload and given that I would. Our recommendation here in this slide would be to increase her pay, maybe look into making her. I, we threw out executive assistant, but doesn't have to be. She, I just feel that if she's gonna take on more of a role, she needs to be compensated.
How many hours is she currently?
Thirty hours right now.
It's just changing the hourly rate and not the.
So what, yeah, it's an increase of four thousand is the proposal, but.
Would you look at?
All subject.
The way you're looking, the love, what I love about this is you're sharing resources. So you, you're gaining, you know, you're optimizing that and you're gaining some sale. But to your point, are there other clerks? Level positions as the current highway supervisor that could actually chip in? So you pool resources across all departments.
Exactly.
You know, so just another consideration.
And then the two.
The seasonal maintenance staff.
These, you've got a lot in discussion, but.
Yeah, these are basically this, these would be the two seasonal crew. This is already in the budget under the parks budget. If you hired two people for twenty weeks at twenty bucks an hour, it's basically break even point.
Which would allow them, so right now there, these, the seasonal staff is starting in June. But the grass starts growing in April. So this would allow them to start working April and work through Labor Day.
Yeah.
Which would get more, we, springtime is the busiest time for the grounds department or parks department. And then this would allow them to be there longer to get more accomplished.
I think that makes sense. And I think when you do something like this, you got one shot at doing it right. So broader, you consider the broader thinking here is actually a good thing.
And I, we, we discussed it. I said, I worked for the state seasonally for a few years. Department of Conservation and Recreation staff is seventy-five percent or more of seasonal staff. And they get people to come back every year to.
To keep your pay.
If you pay them to do it, it's seventeen or eighteen dollars an hour. They're not gonna come back, but if we can give them twenty, or if we can figure out a way to give them more money, you'll get better qualified candidates that come in and they're gonna wanna come back the following year.
Yeah, McDonald's is paying seventeen an hour. It's hard.
Uh, question on that. So current seasonal staff, is, is it fair to say that a lot of times it's high school students or people that are in college?
Yes.
Yeah. So if, if we're starting earlier, are they going to be available or?
Why? I think the intent here is to, you're looking at hiring more, uh, somebody a little bit older that's looking for this work and I.
Sure.
From what you, you say that the people are out there, if we're paying the right money.
Okay.
But the huge key is having that new supervisor form and position that's an adult that can schedule to work.
Right.
There's nothing against people we've had, but.
There's nobody.
We've pushed as far as it could go.
Right. Be out there supervising this staff continually throughout the day. And this is not a shot at Dan. It's not his job to be out there supervising these guys all day long. When, I mean, I, I was on the parks department for five years and the supervisor there was with the guys all day long. And made sure there wasn't a blade of grass out of place. We need, I, I don't know, we need to go that far, but somebody needs to be out there supervising this staff throughout the day and checking in on them to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. It, it, especially if we end up with high school kids.
We had also talked about potentially contracting out that work, uh, and to see, no, obviously we'd have, you know, qualifications on the person, persons. Though be, be doing contracted work and whether that be more cost effective than, than doing to permanent seasonal.
Yeah, I can tell you parks, parks attempted once and the price we got back was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I would like to try it again. I just, I think it's useful data. But I'm, the conversation I had with the, the bidder was that they would basically have to hire a full-time person to take on the mending jobs. And so it really isn't saving us anything. But there's all sorts of hybrid opportunities out there too. I think, you know, that's just one small piece of this.
Is there a comp, like a municipality that you looked at to come up with this structure that's, that's similar to the structure out there? Or was this purely inward focused?
Um, it was looking at some, but most of it was kind of us just taking the call and study and saying, let's put something together based on those recommendations.
Yeah. And then finally, the water superintendent would be five hours. You currently have a twenty-three dollars seventy-nine cent an hour clerk. Proposed change it to a superintendent at twenty-nine fourteen. It's an increase of thirteen hundred. Potential future increase if that, you know, you could have a certified operator. That money is already within the water budget, um, because we have budgeted amount to do hydrant maintenance, valve maintenance. And potentially, you know, and overtime as well. Um, as I mentioned before, we're spending twenty-five thousand dollars a year contracting out the water operator service. And all that gets us is the day-to-day stuff. If there's anything that goes wrong, we're getting billed a hundred and fifty bucks an hour for them to come out. You know, it adds up real quick or just like the PFOS, you know, it's three hundred dollars a test plus his labor once a month. And then the director of parks and rec at thirty-five hours, again, it's currently twenty-three seventy-nine. We're proposing to put it in line with other department heads. It's an increase of, I don't know, let's keep zooming out, fifteen thousand dollars. And then the additional stipends, if you went that route, would be covered by the big funding that's already paying for those three hours a week. Plus there was money related to green communities.
Does this mean more programming for the town?
Yeah. So that would, it would free up the, I mean, that's a big part of it. It would free up me or whoever to take on programming and do other things instead of just sitting on a lawnmower. And my, as I, you know, that's, I think where parks has gotten stuck. We've grown and grown. We can barely keep up with what we have to maintain it. Um, and even some of our summer programs are a struggle. And so then this, I think, and this is the question you asked, this is the, you know, theoretical warrant article. So the total increase would be ninety-five thousand dollars for this. It creates a new position and restructures these departments. And that's, that would be an annual cost. So if you prorated it, it would obviously be less if you did something now or later.
But this isn't theoretical, cause there's a placeholder warrant article to do just.
We discussed initially the entire ninety-five thousand, but I think now we're, we're moving more towards an understanding that compensating, you know, the superintendent, proposed superintendent, should be taken into account as well as, uh, the, uh, director of parks and recreation. So the net on that would be twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. If we don't have a superintendent. In some configuration, I don't know. It would be up to the board to sit, if it's John, if it's, if you're going out to, try to get another individual or, or hire, uh, another individual. The town, the board will have the opportunity to discuss salary, just like they could with John.
I mean, I, next week we're gonna discuss the feasibility, what we're seeing. These structural changes are not small. And my concern, one, I, I, I'll set it. I don't do this type of thing in STM. This has gotta be ATM to start, you know? Cause it's, it's a significant impact to the lineup and budget.
Well, first of all, the, the, doesn't the warrant close on the ninth?
Eleventh.
Eleventh. So, no, this is, th- this is definitely.
I think this is great fodder to set thing. What do we do?
Exactly.
Center.
Right. That's exactly right.
Well, and I mean, I wonder how this will impact the budget for FY twenty-five. I mean, so that's, I mean, that's cause that, there's, there's time for that.
Exactly. That's exactly right.
In place that this is the initial, like any business startup comes.
But, but.
And, and there's certain functions that can be handled now that could be incorporated without taking the big leap.
Right. Which, which is what I was talking about. This is, we're talking about functionality right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Looking to the future.
We have to enable it.
But we're talking about structural changes with what I just heard David say in terms of. He's producing term superintendent, no, he said superintendent now and he said director.
We use superintendent now because the Colin Center was very specific.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Get him away from surveyor.
Funded a, a, a position, a new position by going down that, that's all I'm saying. So. When the director of.
And I think, and this is really just, you know, a framework. And I, I think it's.
Start to discuss.
About this too, about, you know, this maybe, it's not something we're gonna vote on tomorrow.
If this wasn't good, we wouldn't be having a conversation. We'd all be sitting there. The fact that we're having a conversation, right, means it's good stuff, you know? This is a good, like I said, it's a good start.
Actually, when we looked at the, what, what we called that person and it was considered superintendent of highway grounds facilities initially. And.
But that's the multiple.
Yeah. Superintendent of public works, though. That's, I mean, essentially.
I'm not sure we're there yet, though. That's the biggest thing. I, I don't think, I think if you call it the department of public works, I think you're setting expectations regarding future water sewer that aren't here right now.
I mean, what are you doing or can you do right now to set yourselves up for success when we come to a conclusion?
I, I, I think that's a, that's a question for another day. Right, right now, what I was looking for from them, they actually gave it to us. And, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I think this is terrific.
It's got really great details.
Couple more.
I mean, it's.
Go ahead.
Then let's, and I know you're trying to get through it. Right.
Thank you.
We don't have to dig into these too much now. If you wanna talk about this now or.
So it just, uh, I brought up the software earlier. I did, I did talk to a company, Jason has seen the proposals from them. This company specifically caters to DPW-related software. It has, for DPWs alone, has nine different applications. I got quotes for three. We're looking at a work order system with what they call quick asset, which would be the guys in the field are able to communicate back through a tablet. This, and update, take pictures as the progress is going. It's all mapped in, uh, our GIS. That would be the work order system. It would definitely. There's definitely efficiencies there that can be had with having this system. The fleet maintenance software, same thing. That proposal I sent to you guys, or the presentation I sent to you guys about the new truck, uh, where I came up with the numbers. I spent an hour and a half digging through papers to get those numbers for the past five years, whereas this software will give it to you in five seconds.
So, question to like, when I see fleet maintenance software, I would say that would not necessarily be limited to highway fleet, correct?
It's, it's, how, how mu- how far do we wanna go with it? I mean, obviously, obviously, given this proposal, parks department or grounds would be part of that. I could tell you right now that the senior van's gonna be in our shop on Friday.
I would say both these things are potentially town-wide application. So maybe, I'd be curious, send your take on can these be expanded to other operational departments in town?
It's not like a per asset.
It's just one, it's a one license for town.
So it's enterprise.
Those, it's all based on.
Yeah, you're a software guy.
Like, yeah, it's a, it's a very traditional modular model for software where the components that you would be purchasing are specified to the departments. So that's why saying like, we got these three ones quoted. So for other parts of the town, they would have to have a module that we would purchase that plugged into the software to do that. However, yes, an asset is an asset. And so if, if, you know, John decides to track it in there, then he decides to track it in there. It's, it's kind of fascinating, honestly. Pat yourselves on the back, not too hard, but, um, it's fascinating. We've been able to be so successful as highway department without physically tracking any of this stuff. It's, it is kind of phenomenal. So, um, but I can't imagine that lasts very long. So just for these guys to like, fill a hole and then be able to say, I filled a hole and I'm going to my next job instead of coming all the way back and figuring out what's next and sorting through the papers. Uh, that, the savings alone must be measurable.
But the concept of work order is universal.
Yeah. And this, I've, yeah, I've talked to other departments within the town, such as border health, building department. Because on top of this, there's a whole nother side to this software that is permitting for every, it's conservation, it's border health, it's building department. It is, it's for you guys to do your liquor license approvals and everything.
I think that's a whole discussion.
Right. But I have talked to these other departments and one of the questions that I got was, okay, so if there's a building maintenance issue at town hall or at the library next door, are we gonna be able to get into this software and just put a, a ticket in or does it have to? So that's something that we would have to figure out.
And, and look at existing, I mean, if, I'm after about the current viewpoint permitting.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's a much bigger discussion. I know, I, I know Jody's on the call. I think at some point there needs to be a townwide discussion on all those solutions for sure.
You know, I'm talking about, you know, the, the budget and things like that. Software though, is the type of thing you can act on sooner than later. If, if it's, I'm just saying, let's look at it to see what the broader application across town is.
I could tell you that I've tried to find other software that is gonna fit exactly what we need at the highway department as far as work orders and fleet maintenance. Nothing, I looked at another software that was recommended to me and it was like, I have guys down there that are not creating technology. This needs to be easy for them. And this other software was not. It was all over the place now, like this, when I, I've been on the, I've been on a call with the president of this company twice. Dan was on one of them. And this software seems like it's very user-friendly and easy to use. And I have not been able to find anything that is exactly what we're looking for down there. And I've looked, I've tried to find other software. I will tell you that Oxbridge uses this software for their fleet maintenance and their work order system. And I did go over to kind of get a walkthrough on how it worked. And they have had nothing but good things to say about it.
This would be a special time meeting.
One comment on this, uh, I see the, uh, the quote for the software. But you also talked about like having physical hardware deployment in the vehicles to interface with the software. And I assume that's not included in the device. So if it's not, um.
You were talking about, I.
Like the, sorry, the tablets.
Tablets.
So I assume the tablets are not included in this.
So there's actually a request in already to get a tablet for our guys because right now they are utilizing their cell phones to take pictures of jobs to, to do big safe tickets to do stuff in the field. And, uh, one of the members on there has no room left on his phone because all he does is take pictures of every job that we do. If we have a tablet, even now without the software, it would free up, it would, you can use that. You have everything right there. Now you can integrate the software into that tablet if we choose to go that way and it would just streamline things.
Okay, that's cool. But let's, let's wrap this up.
Yeah. So the just, and we don't have to dive into just the last big slide is talking about infrastructure and there's a lot more detail in here, but you know, I, it was been previously discussed, I think with most of you. Your parks department is operating out of basically a shed with no utilities. We need a permanent home for parks. Uh, and then additionally, I wasn't even aware, like you guys have office needs. Certainly if we add positions, there's gonna be more space. There's no training room for highway. They're coming here if they need to use the TV, like to do like that stormwater training. So this just kind of touched on some of the different options that are out there.
Would roll us into the capital planning.
Right, absolutely. This needs to be part of that discussion.
We just, we, we're, we're looking long-term with, we need to look into options.
I mean, you, the highway barn, according to the study, right?
At least to understand.
Yeah.
Slide fifty.
Yeah. And then this just, again, we don't, this is a to-do list that just kind of reiterated items highlighted in the Colin Center. Um, and then the last is the conclusion, but I, I think we talked about a lot of this stuff.
We talked about most of it, so.
And just, um, you know, again, I think our goal was to take that Colin Center and try and come up with a proposal that addressed what was highlighted there. Um, but, you know, it's just a suggestion, um, from our, you know, perspective of, of, what did you say?
The boots on the ground.
On the ground.
You know, certainly I think there's other solutions out there.
It's very helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just one final thing I'd like to thank, yeah, both John and Dan and, um, Jody for participating in the process and sort of having a, a meeting of the minds in terms of how to put this together in some kind of fashion that makes sense both now and in the future. So.
Yeah. It's awesome that people wanna do this together. So.
Yeah, it was a good work.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Let's go down to, uh, number fourteen, which is the solicitation bylaw. I'd ask, I know our council, Paris North Business here, um, just to kind of bring everybody up to speed. There was a suggestion. Multiple people had, had, had come to me and sent me messages and then I suggested through an email that there might be a, or they'd like to put a, a.
Um, there might be a, or they'd like to put a, a, a solicitation by law on the, uh. SDM warrant. Talked about getting, getting, uh, signatures and what that process was like. And then the, uh, the police chief had, um, had been asked and provided a copy of, uh, Bellingham's. Uh, solicitation, anti-solicitation by law, um, as a, as a model perhaps for us to look at. So I flipped that to, to, uh, attorney north and asked her to do some diligence on it and give us some feedback. So that's where she is now to give us some feedback. So thank you very much for being so patient.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Uh, so I took a look at the, uh, the proposed bylaw. And did a little legal research. And what I have come to understand is that, um. This model on Bellingham, Bellingham, uh, was disapproved by the attorney general as facially unconstitutional. Um, and there are provisions in this bylaw and that are modeled in the proposed bylaw. That are, uh, exactly things that the attorney general called out, including, um, uh. The Supreme Court has held that a thirty day limit on, um, a permit is unconstitutional. So. Door to door, uh, uh, solicitation is protected by the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. And also the, the, the Declaration of Rights in Massachusetts. Uh, and so the AG has looked very carefully at many, many of these. Uh, bylaws. Uh, another provision that was in the proposed draft that has, has caused problems and. Was the basis for attorney general denial was a lack of standards to guide the police department. In whether or not to actually, uh, issue the permit. Um, they're not allowed to have unfettered discretion. With something that affects constitutional rights. Uh, there are, based on my research, uh, a bunch of, um. Of these decisions by the attorney general that, um, do not approve, uh, these types of bylaws. Uh, there are some communities, including one of the other communities I advise, that does have a bylaw that, um, has at least. Passed attorney general muster, perhaps with some cautions about it. So what I would propose. So I, I, I don't think it's worth anybody's time or effort to go with the proposal that is, you know, was currently shared. What I would propose is if the select board is interested in developing such a proposal. Um, I could certainly put together a, a draft bylaw that would, you know, hopefully meet the, the constitutional requirements. Um, based on my research and some of the other, uh, already approved bylaws. But that's not something I can do between now and the eleventh of October. Uh, I would need to be prepared to do that for the spring. Annual.
And just, just to be clear, because I had a couple of people ask about the citizen's petition and what I, what I explained to them, and I'll just say it publicly. Um, you know, one of the great things about the way that, that the town's government works, any individual can make a proposal. Go to the town clerk, register, register with the town clerk, get a petition and go out and get signatures. And for a special town meeting, I believe that the sick, the, the number is a hundred. But if you were to do that and get a hundred signatures, then it would definitely get voted on at town meeting. And if it passed, the next step would be, it would be sent to the attorney general, to the attorney general's office to review it. And they would decide if it was constitutional or not. Um, and again, what happened in Bellingham was they said, no, you know, it's not. So you have to go back to the drawing board. So anybody is allowed to, to start a petition and do whatever it is they want. We did one a few years ago. Um, that dealt with, uh, a requirement for the town to broadcast and record all. Public meetings. And it passed overwhelmingly. But because it wasn't a bylaw, because it wasn't done properly, it was not enforceable. Um, and it, I know it was, it was a waste of time because of the learning experience. Um, but we had to go back to the drawing board and start over again. So, um. You know, I, I think there's enough interest in town that I would, I'd ask you, I'd ask council to look into it and, and deal with the, with the police chief. Cause certainly it's gonna dump some requirements in your lap, um, as far as investigation and everything else. And I'd ask you to, to work on it and report back to us so that we're, uh, so we're ready. And I see somebody has their hand raised.
Robert, go ahead.
Hi, I'm just trying to turn on my camera, but may forego for now. Um, I, I was looking into doing this. I don't know if Kurt's there. Is that? Maybe Kurt in the back?
Yep.
Um, we, we both linked up to try to do this. Is there any legal issue with the, the no knock part? Or is it primarily related to the, the, the limits and the standards?
It's, there are other comments. Those are the two big things. Um, but there are other comments. Yes, the no knock thing, uh, is a problem. Um, the hours of restriction are a problem. Um, and the penalties are a problem. So really, I, I, it really needs to be. Reanalyzed from, from start to finish.
Okay.
Thank you.
My daughter.
Yeah, just, I mean, what, so it sounds like. If we want council to work on a bylaw for spring that's being thrown out there as an opportunity, I'm wondering would make sense if. Either Robert or Kurt wanted, maybe make sure they articulate the intent as they brought it forward. And that way. Uh, Karis can work around and understand the intent behind what they want to accomplish and give that as a framework to draft something.
Sure. Robert, do you wanna, do you have any, any other comments you wanna make?
Uh, so my, my reasoning for bringing this up is I, I'm in a new neighborhood and we've had quite a few door to door sales. And they will not leave usually after saying we're not interested. Um, one in particularly, I was on my roof. With a tether and they would not leave, uh, until I threatened to call the cops. So my, my intent is to not have that happen.
Do anybody else, Kurt, or anybody else wanna say anything? Or, or are you on the same page as him or?
Yeah, so I was wondering, can we possibly get a list of what, uh, was what could be given on rock due to. So we can kind of see, you know, what exactly was that we need to change. Uh, is it, you know, just like, or doesn't wanna do this? I don't know if you hear any of that.
Well, okay, well, first of all, I think I make it clear is we, we do wanna do it. And we are gonna have them review it. Um, and, and you, along with a lot of other citizens have made the same suggestion. So. Again, what I would say is just stay tuned, you know? Um, Chief, you have anything you wanna?
So as I say, Robert, Kurt, um, I'm, uh, I'm available anytime. So if you guys wanna get together, um, and work with me. And I'll work with, you know, Karis and we'll get together in that. Karis, did you say Bellingham actually had forward that one to the attorney general? Or was that an old bylaw where they, they never ever actually did?
No, uh, it, it, Bellingham was, so I, Bellingham's, uh, bylaw was not approved by the attorney general. Um, and, and the, the things that were not approved were things that are in the draft that was given to me. So, and I, I, I believe I read that they were taken from Bellingham, but I'm not sure if Bellingham took it off their books or not. But the, the, if, if what I got is what's current in Bellingham, it was never approved by the attorney general. So it can't be enforced. So I didn't go back and look at the.
Said to her, I got it two places, I think once from you and once from, from Robert. And, and it was all forwarded. So I think it's all the same document.
Yeah, no, that is, that is it. I could, turns after reading it, um, select board member Chanel called, but we had a long conversation about it. And I definitely wanted to go to you because obviously there's some First Amendment issues there. Um.
Yeah.
And again, just because another town's doing something, I think what I had told them is there's a town on a state highway that changed the, the speed to twenty-five miles an hour. And four years later, the state found out about it. And every case got overturned. So just because another town doesn't, doesn't mean it's legal.
That's exactly the point, right?
Yeah.
And, and as I said, there are many decisions of the attorney general that I would like to take some more time to read and understand. What types of provisions are okay and what types of provisions are not. Obviously, as I said earlier. The thirty day period to review a permit is not constitutional. It's too long. And the lack of standards by which the police department makes a decision as to whether to issue a permit or not. Or, or is also, uh, a fatal flaw, uh, and, and unconstitutional here. So, um. And then again, I will, we'll look at some that have been passed and have been approved. And I'll have that, you know, I'll be able to see that from the attorney general's decisions as well. So we can have a more comprehensive, uh, uh. Bylaw that is, you know, capable of being approved by the attorney general. And, and just to, just a, a quick note to, to that on to. To what the chair said. Citizens petitions have to be heard. Um, you can't, I can't say to the, the select board. Oh, you can't put that citizen's petition on the warrant because it's illegal or it won't get approved by the attorney general. Under the general laws, they have to be heard. So I think it would save everybody's time and money to, to not put something on the warrant if it's not yet.
And that's.
To request that.
And Robert, that's why I explained when, when, when you and I exchanged emails that, um, you know, there's no requirement for us to have council look at this. But I just didn't wanna see you waste time for what I think is a worthwhile effort. Um, you know, to come up with something that doesn't violate everybody's rights, but actually gives us some peace. So.
And Robert, for you and anyone listening, if something happens like that, I know you on the roof, so you probably have a cell phone. I'm not gonna tell you, grab your cell phone when you're on the roof. But, um, if you're at your house and someone's knocking on the door and they won't leave you, call us. That's what we're here for. We're on patrol. You know, there's four guys on during the day, three at night. We'll come to the house, we'll deal with the solicitor. We can issue a no trespass if they keep going there. There's a point where they, they go beyond their constitutional rights if they're harassing you. And we are more than happy to help you with that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Let's, um, just review the, uh, the draft of the STM warrant. You wanna walk us through this? David? I'll throw it up on the screen if that's okay.
Sure.
So as we're, just to, to start here, so we have bills of our prior years, the first one.
Yeah, uh, we have a variety bill in the amount of fifty. Five seventy-seven thirty-six. And we have a Meyer bill, uh, in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-two.
And that's the insurance match. Now, a- any idea why that one slipped through the cracks? Did they just take too long to give us the bill?
I think that, that was basically the situation. In both cases, we got the bill too late to actually get it paid at that time. It's important to note also that that's a nine tenths vote. So when we get to town meeting, you know, it's not a simple majority. It's not two thirds, it's a nine tenths. Generally, I, I don't think I've ever seen, uh, a prior year bill vote. Get overturned, but.
But I have, but I have seen times when town personnel have gone to, I think we had a town accountant at one point. Talked to a state agency like this. And what, what happened was the bill got pulled back because by their own standards, they are supposed to send them in a timely manner. And they didn't. So they just, they were out of luck.
I think from a business perspective, it sends a message. If you're like a small vendor.
Sure.
And you, you did the work, but fortunately.
Yeah, it's Verizon.
Yeah, Verizon. I have no.
This is a local.
And it's a five hundred dollar bill. It's not like a lot.
But if, but anyways, let, let's move on to, let's see. So free cash.
Yeah, that's standard article.
Yeah, we don't have those numbers yet, right?
We are, we're actually working, uh, to get.
Yeah.
Uh, same thing with the capital stabilization, stabilization, those two standard articles.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, is Jody still on? I don't, in terms of the OPEV, uh, money that she's requesting. Uh, I haven't really had a chance to talk to her about that. So I don't know what Jody wants.
Yeah, I, I am still on. I, we haven't determined that number, um, quite yet, but we've, we've funded it very marginally over the last. Um, the, through the stretch of time that I've been here in, in prior. So I don't wanna give a number right now, but, um. It's definitely prudent to have it as an article and we'll make that determination once we have a look at free cash.
So number five, is this, is this one for you, Jody, too? You asked to be put on here?
Yes. So there was legislation that passed, um, earlier this year with regards to, um. Investing town funds in, there are very stringent requirements and guidelines. Um, really seeking safety, liquidity and yield at the heart of any investment decision. And there are very limited options as it relates to investing town funds. Um, the prudent investor rule is. Gives a little bit more opportunity for diversification, um, amongst investments. And it's a common practice that was recommended to be put on town warrant, um, through the MCTA and associations. Um, of treasurer collectors. So this is definitely something that gives us some more liberty around strategically investing funds.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Six and seven of these highway ones, this, uh, highway sign and then the truck.
Six is highway and police together.
Okay.
Seven.
Is this, is number six, when it talks about a, um, mobile speed limit sign? So this is, so this is, you can move it around town. Didn't we used to have a couple of those?
Not, not trailers. Like these are, they go on a post, there's lamps that put them on like a signpost.
Like the one coming into town?
But those are permanent.
Right.
And so that's what the issue is. And I think there's four of those in town that we've been dealing phone calls. For residents saying, we want them on our road. And these are expensive units.
So you'll work with police?
These are portable, where it's a five minute swap them from this post, move to a different road. They can stay there for three weeks. They're all battery powered. So this.
The battery lasts?
What's the cost?
Eighty-two hundred. Asking for two of them and eighty-two hundred dollars. So that's with extra batteries.
How long do the, how soon the batteries need to be replaced then? Every three or five years? Something like that?
Yeah. I think the batteries are, I can look it up, but I think it's one hundred per battery.
I mean, what, what do the residents say when you bring something like this to their neighborhood? It's beneficials?
Well, so we get complaints, obviously, with speakers in town. Um, and since there's only two signs going up, um, everybody wants to.
I saw, I said, hey, Bill.
You see them in Oxbridge, Oxbridge has, of course, the ones that go poles, they go around. Um, if you keep them there too long, it becomes a sign.
They get used to.
Then it becomes a, like they see how fast they can go again up there. Uh, when it first pops up, um, I noticed it. When I bring my kids to school every now and then, in Oxbridge, they move around. The first few weeks, people actually did slow around. So they're wondering, is there a cruiser?
Do you, what presence around these, like?
I think it's, it'll be big experience. Right now, we can, um, if you go online, we would point this, you know, if you're on mainstream, you think they're speeding. This, this one, we'll put you on the list next month. And we'll put bruises there random, you know, times during the week. So now we would implement this with that, um, you know, maybe put a sign further up. Maybe we'll park our, the back. And again, it's not a real good take. It's about education.
Yeah.
And also, we want people to slow down. And if it's, if we pull you over, you know, the first time, we're probably gonna say, hey, slow it down. You know, but we see you on a regular basis. Then it becomes more, you know, cause I think it's always been an education for us, just be known as.
I appreciate it.
And that's what this helps into, you know, it, it is making people aware of this around. But sometimes people just might not even know. Now you're on a street and speed limit signs aren't amended, they're all of these. You know, you don't know how much limit.
All right. So number seven is the, is a, for a truck. And, uh. This is, this is to replace one of the Sanders dump trucks?
Yeah, so the presentation I sent you guys a few weeks back.
Right.
This is to replace that truck.
With a, it was a similar international, right, that you wanted to replace?
We had three options, but I would recommend it's. That's like I said, the presentation, five internationals on any behalf of international parks. And, and I know cheaper always isn't always better, but this, this was the cheapest option.
Do we need to put that on the warrant? Like the cost, the direct cost?
Well, you, you gotta appropriate money.
Yeah, we have to have a number appropriate up to a certain amount.
Okay.
Cost of that key, guys, that presentation, which I believe was off.
They're fifty-three.
It's right now, they're not building anything till twenty twenty-four and the price would be up. That was the estimated cost that I got from the, uh, the dealership.
All right. Okay. And then number eight is, uh, for a FOB based key system for town hall?
Uh, we had, uh, discussed, uh.
Yes.
Doing that as a Meyer thing, they said absolutely no way.
Right.
Uh, I have been working with Dan on that. Dan has contacted a, uh, company, uh, that is giving him a price on. Just the four doors, the outside doors, uh, with the cost of FOB. So get rid of everybody being able to get in. You don't know how many keys are out there. Uh, internally, uh, we're discussing, uh, recording all of the doors. For the approximate cost of two thousand dollars. And I think we can do that internally, but I gotta talk to Jody about that. And I think we can do that internally, but I gotta talk to Jody about that.
And this wouldn't be for, for the police department? How do you, do you guys key enter?
Right.
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, are we gonna be able to combine that so he doesn't have to have two FOBs to get?
I gave some briefly to, I'll get this place of sound, so that he's gonna add doors.
Okay.
So I, I already can talk into our participator.
All right. And then maybe later highway, all that.
Number eight, what's the?
Ten thousand for the FOBs.
So ten, so ten K for number eight. All right. Reorganize highway department. We've already talked about that. Um, and then that.
Would have to be rewritten based upon what the board decided to do in terms of implementation, at least the initial phase.
All right. So we have, so we have ten, which is CPA money for a disc golf course and eleven CPA money to buy a conservation restriction for the, uh, hundred and sixteen acres up on North Ave. Known as the Vanessus property. Ian, welcome back.
I was gonna say that the language that's in the proposed warrant I wrote, I know that Ian had submitted it different language. And I just wanna point that out.
Yeah, this is just a placeholder. Um, but on the disc golf course, um, I think Ellen Agu is on here. And so she can talk about it a little bit, but it's basically to buy the equipment and, um, have the installation of like an eighteen-hole golf, disc golf course, which is not in, very invasive along sort of the trails at Inman Hill. And it would be CPA funds and it would be around sixty thousand dollars.
And, uh, tell us about eleven, about the, uh, conservation restriction?
So this would be buying a conservation restriction, which is buying the development rights of a hundred and sixteen acres on this property. And it's the Maple Farm Sanctuary. It's on Earth Avenue. It's a real iconic property where it has the farm fields and they wanna preserve the farm fields and the forest in the back. And, um, they would continue owning the property, but they would allow public access on, uh, um, on trails in the back of the property. And this property connects to other open spaces. Um, and the amount, it would be from the, and we're working with the, um, Metacomet Land Trust. They're writing a, um, grant proposal. So it would be in combination with them, but the, um, total of that, the C, that will come from CPA funds would be two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, hundred thousand. And, uh, the, and just the, the value of the conservation restriction, they've had it appraised, is one point six five million. So the town would be putting two hundred and twenty-five, um, hundred thousand in just a portion of that.
What is, and, and that two twenty-five buys the conservation restriction, so it can never be developed?
Correct.
And, and they would continue to own it. And even when they sold it, it would be sold to someone else who would do a similar, who would basically keep it in farming, keep it in public or, and keep the public, the right of access to the public, right?
Yes, yes. And that would be in perpetuity. And this doesn't include any of the buildings of the farm, barn, farm, um, barn on the property. It's just the a hundred and sixteen acres and it's really beautiful. Like from the road, it's a beautiful view. Um, but in the back, that land is just gorgeous. It's got like a farm pond, muddy brook runs through it. And it's, it's just really beautiful and it's an important watershed area, wildlife habitat. But.
Scouts used to camp there when I was, when I was.
Yeah, Peppercorn Hill is, you know, if you keep walking, right? Peppercorn Hill is on the other side. So it's a, a great track of land for people who don't walk over there.
Same. I think, um, in, important to reiterate, we're not buying the land because I, I saw that in print and that was the focus. It's more about make.
Preserve.
Pure preservation.
That's what it is. We're not buying the land. We're just basically paying for them to give up the development rights.
Yeah. This is probably one of the most iconic.
Yeah.
Lands.
I agree.
Yeah, and allowing public access, even though they own it. I think that's an important aspect of it.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So they give up the rights to develop it and they have to open it up. They, they, they have to allow people to, to be able to enjoy it and walk on it and use it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, our street's a public way. That's what, that's what twelve is? That we have to, uh, uh, we're gonna.
Yes, uh, I wanna say that, that when I, I spoke to, uh, Jack in the East, said that the planning board is hoping to move it forward. There's some questions about the process in terms.
I can speak a little bit on that.
Sure.
We did a final walkthrough on that today with both Afonso's engineer and the town's engineer. Uh, there was one issue that was addressed this afternoon, the letter since the town engineer saying this road is good to go and be accepted.
Okay.
The board is gonna have to lay it out.
Yep. All right.
Just a comment that we need it to be accepted to plow it. So that needs to be accepted to plow it. So.
Well, there are, there are other ways around it. Actually, Attorney North had done a presentation last year. And by the way, what, you all received an email about the conference, um, in January. And I would, I would highly recommend that, um, that you come check it out. It was, uh, it was terrific last year. Um, and it was actually great to, to, to see actually Attorney North making a presentation for the whole state. And it was kinda great to be sitting there thinking, well, that's our council. But in any event, um, so that is, that's the draft of the warrant.
Uh, we probably would be looking potentially putting the highway software or along. Wanted to.
So we close the, uh, so, well, just go ahead and put another placeholder on there for that and we'll, and we'll, um, and just as if, our next meeting, again, as I said, is, uh, is next week. It's a week from tonight. And it's a community workshop or, or a select board workshop that'll be in the, um, in the conference room downstairs. And we're going to, that, that's, that's pending, um, that we actually have, uh, the equipment in there that we're supposed to. Now, if we don't, Chief, do you have access to your schedule? Do you know if, if your community room is available next a week from tonight? Well, we don't, but the issue is if we don't have the ability to broadcast and report there, um, well, maybe we'll do it in the community room. Six thirty to eight thirty. All right, thanks. So that, that'll be a backup.
It's, uh, to the software, if you put a placeholder out there. I mean, I would not, I, I would maybe add the, the motion to be more than the ninety, the, the specific dollars quoted because that could give you appropriate, appropriate money for software and then you can determine which software intended.
Yeah, up to, up to a certain amount.
Yeah.
Or you could just, uh, frame the article up such a way that it says to raise it appropriate in principle. Station money.
Right.
For a specific purpose.
Right.
That's with the motion that's made on the floor, you can serve the amount.
So.
It's always better to put the number in because it gives proper notice, but you can carry it right up to the day of the, of time.
And most of the dollars end up in our motions.
Yeah. Yeah. Obviously, um, all of these are subject to funding. Once we find out what, you know, what our, uh, what our free cash situation is, then we, then we'll have a better idea of exactly what we can afford. We also have, you know, ARPA funds we need to talk about for some of these.
But yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, right. There's some good ARPA fund usage, might be built.
Right. All right. So.
I just got a couple of things.
Sure.
Uh, one is I've been having some discussions and actually met, uh, Joyce Gilmore at her property. And, uh, we had a discussion about, uh, the trees, uh, that she had planted in the shrubbery. But not, not only it's the historical value, but it's also the sentimental value.
And this has to do with, with.
Yeah, so I should probably have said that first. But, uh, so I have the Department of Transportation as well as the, um, firm that they hired. Uh, and they're willing to come out on October thirteenth. Uh, and I, I don't have the time on me right now, but, uh, the intent is to, to listen to what, uh, Joyce has to say. But she'd like to be sure of least people there, the fire chief and some members of the planning board and especially the board of selection. So that, you know, that, the, those people that are there here, exactly what, how it's gonna impact her property. But if there are other properties within the project scope that the board feels, uh, should be addressed, that's a good opportunity to do that too. And I thought it was gonna be harder to actually get them out, but they were pretty.
When I was at the CMRPC meeting a couple of weeks ago, I, I asked if they would be willing to help like broker relationship between us and them if this didn't work out. And they said they'd be more than happy to do that. So. Um, they said that they're, uh, much more receptive to changes on their state plans because they'd rather make changes than fight everything. So. There is some other help if we needed.
Uh, we had our first connect meeting and I thought it was a success. We talked about a whole bunch of different things. Uh, the work, uh, senior work program. Uh, we went, went over the schedule for the special town meeting. Um, the, uh, group did ask if we could put the, uh, special town meeting, uh, when it's in its final form, up on some kind of a share point, ship point document. Uh, it was overall, it was just a good thing. And, and like I said, I'm planning another one for like four weeks from now. So that we keep the flow of communication going and everybody's talking to each other. And, uh, that, uh, you know, it, it, it just, it makes it easier to work with other people when you know what their concerns are and, and how we could share, you know, our resources as a group. So. I don't know. Do you wanna talk about the, me talk about the mass historical rant over there?
No, I don't think that's necessary at this point.
All right. We're not at that point.
Right. All right. Well, thank you very much. I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Two hours and one minute, Mike. I know.
I know.
Which is why I didn't.
Oh, all right.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't, wasn't looking, so did, but I, I.
Oh, I know.
I, I, uh, asked Laura.
Yeah, right.